Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Welcome to the Board Policy Meeting for January 11, 2022. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed on the Board's YouTube channel and will be available for viewing at any time afterwards. Opening with item one, call to order. We'd like to start with the land acknowledgement. Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Welcome to the Board Policy Meeting for January 11, 2022. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed on the Board's YouTube channel and will be available for viewing at any time afterwards. Opening with item one, call to order. We'd like to start with the land acknowledgement.
Fulton, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Mayteen.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawangarong.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Mayteen.
These lands surrounding you greatly.
Are steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty lands.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
Four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you, and we'll have Trustee O'Hern Chernotta lead us in opening prayer.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Let me make the sign of our faith, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. God, help us love the life we live right now. Show us the good things that we often overlook and help us be content with what we have. Forgive us when we compare ourselves to others. Forgive us for longing for things outside of you and your kingdom. Thank you for loving us right where we are, right as we are. Help me keep my eyes on you, in Jesus's name, amen. Name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you, Trustee O'Hern Chernotta. Moving on to item number two, approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
I'll move Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you, moved by Trustee O'Brien, seconded by?
I'll second it.
Trustee Agnew. Anybody opposed?
I object, Madam Chair.
Okay, Trustee Intomasi is opposed. Anybody else opposed? Okay, so move on to item number three, declarations of conflict of interest. Do we have any conflicts of interest this evening? Item. Item number four, delegations. There were no delegations submitted. Moving on to item number five, approval of the amendments for the December 14, 2021, meeting. Can I have someone move, please?
Agnew.
Trustee Agnew moves, seconded by?
Murphy.
Trustee Murphy, thank you. Anybody opposed?
I abstain, Madam Chair.
I also abstain, Madam Chair.
Okay, Trustee Intomasi and Trustee DeRosa both abstain. Any other abstentions or? Opposed? Okay, the minutes passed, thank you. Moving on to item six, action items. Item 6.1, policy I-43, Use of Technology and Digital Citizenship. Can I have somebody please move that the Policy Committee recommends that policy I-43 be forwarded along with amendments to the January 18, 2022, regular board meeting for approval?
O'Brien.
Moved by Trustee O'Brien, seconded by Trustee Duarte. Okay, and we've got Superintendent Crowell.
If you'd like to. Sure. Good evening, Madam Chair, and good evening, trustees. Sort of pleased to bring this policy for you. It was reviewed as part of the regular cycle. We have reviewed the policy and made some minor amendments, specifically updated the definitions and requirements. We've added some references and made some minor edits throughout for clarity. So you have the policy in front of you. Our senior manager, our senior IT manager, Bill Crips, myself, and Superintendent Loaf, are happy to answer any question or sort of participate in the discussion this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent Crowell. Is there any questions, trustees? I'll open the floor. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Superintendent Crowell. I'm looking at this policy, I like the changes, and I'm trying to look at it on my computer. It's in orange, so I'm trying to see what, read it a little clearer. Definitions like how we put in what we have here, transphobic. Homophobic and anti-racist, really think it's good and comprehensive for digital citizenship. Wonder if we could get something on anti, well, against one's religious beliefs, like something against anti-creed. I don't want to point out a specific religion or anything, but I'm. Wonder if we could include that under the verbal? Definition as well. Just throwing it out there. Madam Chair.
Thank you through you, Trustee O'Brien. Superintendent Crowell, do you want to take this question?
Yeah, I'm just taking a look at our sort of corresponding policy, progressive discipline, and just seeing if there's language in there that might reference that. So maybe just give me a minute and I'll see if there's something in there that fits.
And, Madam Chair, just to follow, it was the fourth bullet under bullying can take different forms. They include, and I was, I'm sorry, it was the second bullet, verbal inappropriate epithets, remarks, jokes, renewendos, name-calling, mocking, that are sexist, sexualized, racist, homophobic, transphobic, and are derogatory or profane comments. So, you know, I don't want to just say anti-Semitic, anti-Muslim, or anti-Christian or whatever, but I just wondered if maybe that might be more comprehensive, Madam Chair, and Superintendent Crowell.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. If I'm not mistaken, and because we sat on that Bullying Prevention Committee when we did that, I don't believe that was one of the items that was protected as a ground item. And it's, this is specific on systemic racism. But I see Superintendent Cordero has his hand up. Maybe he can offer some insight on that as well. Is that okay, Superintendent Crowell?
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair, appreciate it. To Trustee O'Brien, these definitions are consistent with what was put in place in the review of last year's Bullying Prevention Intervention Policy and is consistent with those same definitions that will appear in the most recent amendments to the Progressive Discipline Policy that is forthcoming in the next February presentation of policy. So all of those statements meet what is stated in as protected grounds under the Human Rights Code and in the purposes of consistency and alignment with both PPMs and with the Education Act and our previous Board Policy Reviews. Those were the definitions that were updated.
And, Madam Chair.
Do you have a follow-up question, Trustee O'Brien?
Yes, and thank you, Superintendent Cordero. I was on that committee, still am, because I know it's not quite finished yet, and I love the definitions there. Before we leave, can we just get kind of a final opinion from Seda? I just want to get her spin on this, just to make sure we leave it totally kosher, I guess is the word, although that may not be the right word. Is she here?
Hi, I think, I believe she is. Seda, do you mind weighing in on this for us?
Good evening, I'm sorry, I was just trying to get my camera on. So I'm just trying to see if that's been mentioned anywhere in the policy above. I couldn't access the document. Do you mind just scrolling up a little bit more so I can see if it has been? Oh, 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 further down, a little bit further down. A little bit further down, if there's any reference to the Human Rights Code in here that we might, that might cover then all of those code-protected grounds, because the code-protected grounds do indeed include creed as well. So if we want to be specific about that and mention that, or say, you know, code-protected grounds, that would cover all forms of code-protected grounds. The Ontario Human Rights Code is mentioned as one of the, as one of the reference documents here. If you could just go down a little bit further. Oh, stop, right, yeah, so there's a whole range of code-protected grounds here in terms of the bullying definition itself. So a lot of it is covered here in terms of religion, sexual orientation, family circumstances. That's not a code-protected ground, gender, gender identity. So we had, in the overall definition, we had looked at the definition of bullying in the context of the court. So it's mentioned in there already.
Thank you, Seda. Trustee O'Brien?
And I thank you, Seda, I appreciate that. I guess I just wondered that verbal definition to reflect what was down further, because we do have two mentions there on gender verbal abuse, homophobic and transphobic, and one on racist. I just thought the verbal epithets might be more corresponding if we had it mentioned in there. That's just my opinion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. Trustee Intomasi, you have the floor.
Thank you, and a Happy New Year to you, Chair Guzal. My question to any of the members of senior staff that are bringing this particular update forward. So when I look at the associated policies and procedures that this particular policy speaks to or hinges upon, can anyone tell me which of the policies, I believe there's 12 here or 13, are in queue to be reviewed?
I'm sorry, Trustee Intomasi, so you're looking to see what's referenced? What's?
Well, these aren't references, these are overarching policies which?
Well, they're associated policies and procedures, yes. They're not overarching.
So associated means that this particular policy depends also on these policies. So my question is, because this is a reviewed policy, which means it's updated, which of the policies that are under associated policies and procedures have yet to be reviewed and are in queue to be reviewed for 2022?
Trustee Intomasi, if you'd like, I can send you the policy calendar, and that will show you all of those. If you just give me a second, I'll get it up.
Madam Chair, I have to speak to the policy. You sending me those makes no difference, because it will not deal with a response that I require for my second question and a question of clarification. So it's redundant for you to send me those. This particular question is specifically directed at those that have reviewed this policy, because the assumption that I'm operating under is that these overarching policies will in themselves support the policy we have before us.
Superintendent Pakic, do you have the list? And we can just reference which ones haven't been updated, the associated policies, not overarching policies?
Yes, I can, through you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the question, Trustee Yantumasi. Left to review is? I-24 Fraud Management, VI-24 Fraud Management, and II-39 Progressive Discipline and Safety in Schools Code of Conduct.
Thank you, Superintendent Pakic. Is, Trustee Intomasi, you have a follow-up question?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair. So as I go into the application and scope, PPM 164, which is Requirements for Remote Learning, can you please speak to this particular policy where PPM 164 is in there? And why wouldn't it be referenced, especially when we do not have a PPM 164 policy that speaks and would be in association with this particular policy?
Thank you, Trustee Intomasi. Who would like to take this? Superintendent Crowell or Director Daley? Superintendent Crowell, you have the floor.
My apologies, I'm muted through you, Madam Chair. You're right, it is referenced there. I would say it certainly, if you look on page four, under Principles, the principles that we've identified there are certainly principles that we would apply to a remote learning environment as well as an in-person environment. So in terms of like the spirit of PPM 164 and the requirements, I would say around security, around student engagement, around ensuring that we have the necessary resources for students, I would say that they're included in the Principles.
Point of clarification, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Well, except that, Superintendent Coe, PPM 164 establishes minimum requirements. The minimum requirements would have to be part of this particular policy, because they're basic and they're a preamble to any policy. I mean, giving reference to PPM 164, the requirements for remote learning, if you have bare minimums, they're not anywhere in this particular policy, and they should be referenced, because anybody that looks at this policy for guidance, especially staff, and I'm speaking, you know, especially principals, vice principals, they would have no reference to go by. They would have, you would have to turn them to the Ministry of Education, PPM 164. And, I mean, we can't expect a principal to go into ministerial legislation to invoke this particular policy to see whether or not he or she is following proper procedure, especially in a situation where PPM 164, our board does not even have a policy that addresses that.
Trustee Intomasi, I'm sorry, that was more of a statement than a clarifying question, so.
No, that was both a clarifying statement and a question, Madam Chair.
Okay, well, it seemed more like a statement. I think Director Daley has his hand up as well. Director Daley, did you want to add something or?
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. I guess I would just offer that this particular policy, I-43, is about the use of technology and digital citizenship regardless of PPM 164 or any other policies that we may have in place. So it would apply to the remote learning requirements under PPM 164. It would apply to the daily use of technology in the classroom, whether in person or online. So it's really not specific to PPM 164. It's more about the use of technology and digital citizenship in the virtual world as a whole.
Madam Chair?
Thank you, Director Daley.
Provide me a lead?
I'm going to move on to Trustee Carabella.
No, but I need to respond to Director Daley.
No, no, Trustee Intomasi, that's, you've had, you've had two questions. You can go into the next, you can go, you can go back in the line. We're going to go to the next trustee right now, Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. My question is going to be in regards to the Principles, the first bullet under Principles. It says, "Taking reasonable precautions to ensure that data is secure and safe and should be used for intended purposes only." So I'm going to ask, I don't know if this is the right policy, but I would like to know whether, so if we're, how students are, what safeguards we have in place for, so students can't access porn pornography sites? And if we have a problem with that in our schools about using the Wi-Fi or? I'm not a techie, so I'm wondering what we have in place to protect our students against that.
Thank you, Superintendent Crowell or Superintendent Loaf? Oh, I see Director Daley. Director Daley, did you want to respond to that? Oh, sorry, and I understand Bill Crips is on as well.
Yeah, sorry, I hadn't lowered my hand from the previous.
Okay, well, see, there you go. See what happens when you don't lower your hand? You're going to get called on over and over again. Bill, Bill, I think would probably be the best person to answer this, right, Bill?
Yes, sure, I'll start it out and we'll see how it goes. So thank you for the question and through you, Madam Chair, and Happy New Year, everyone, and good evening. So on what I will call Board Property, we do have Internet content-based filtering in place that does offer a, I'm going to call it a very aggressive filtering towards, I'm going to call it pornography, malicious material, and a lot of other, I'm going to call them industry-style categories that help organizations sort of control the content that, you know, whether it be their employees or in our situation, staff and students, you know, surfing the Internet or using technology, you know, do to sort of protect them from whether it be seeing any malicious sites or protecting, let's say, the computing environment, if that helps.
Thank you, Bill. Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up question?
Okay, that's good to know. So does that mean that if a person tries to access pornography site, that it's blocked? And does that mean there's no way around it? You know, I don't know, kids are pretty good these days with things like VPN or things I hear. And then I wanted to know, my other question is, if it shows up, like, does it show that on our side, whether our system has accessed pornography material? Or is the principal aware? Or does it come forward to us and we have to deal with it?
Okay, thank you for the question through you, Madam Chair. So there, there is never a hundred percent, I'm going to call it certainty, in protecting someone who is really trying to access something on the Internet from gaining access to it. To put it simply, we do have a lot of protection strategies in place for content filtering that would block what I would call in that high 90, so like the 95 percentile pornographic material that does exist on the Internet, a, let's say, a company, a person, somebody putting together a website in a day that would possibly host that style of material, that may not get caught by our Internet filters, so to speak, but they are, you know, industry-leading Internet filters that do catch it in time. There is a lot of reporting towards this material, so the instant we find it, we have avenues of reporting it to a sort of a network operations center where they do immediately classify this style of material, so it does get blocked and, you know, the updates that are delivered pretty much hourly to us every day. So there are a lot of safeguards there. When it comes to, I'm going to call it the ways around, Trustee Carabella, you mentioned something called a VPN. There are other mechanisms that are also in place to kind of get around corporate security. We do have what would be called a very advanced firewall that does block a lot of those activities. So that would help, you know, safeguard our students and, you know, our computer networks. So you can't easily get around things. I'm not saying it's impossible. There are always ways for a person who is determined. But it is very safe. We have had very, very few incidents of this. And when the incidence of something bad truly happening, usually sort of as a result of whether it be this policy or the actions of a lot of staff, it traditionally comes through mechanisms of reporting it to principals, other leadership, to then come to us to start to build an investigation on what was happening. And we do find a lot of interesting ways of, sometimes we have seen Wi-fis from other businesses lead into our school or even access from cellphone data plans even to sort of get around our systems. But, you know, we do have a very aggressive, I'm going to call it, system to find who is doing what and bring that forward to school administration to make a decision.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you so much for that fulsome answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am, can somebody give me the confidence that legal has? We have done some form of legal vetting, either through a lawyer or through some expertise, that these policies are actually in compliance with minimum legal requirements. Thank you.
Trustee Yantumasi, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, I'm not going to get an answer?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize it was actually a question, Trustee DeRosa, it sounded like a statement.
No, it wasn't a statement, there was a clear question there.
Okay, so your question is, has this been vetted through legal?
Yes, would somebody give me some comfort? That we are meeting minimum legal compliance.
And what compliance are you looking for in compliance with what?
Legal compliance in terms of a?
Legal compliance in terms of, a lawyer would be able to determine that. Have we vetted, have we vetted these changes in policy through some form of legal rigor? That's my question.
Superintendent Crowell or Superintendent Loft or Director Daley? I'm not sure who wants to take this question. Director Daley.
I, I don't believe the changes that we're suggesting here have been sent to a lawyer. Some of them are definitions. They're not legal definitions. They're kind of standard definitions. In terms of the references to bullying, as Superintendent Cordero noted, they're in compliance with safe schools legislation, and that's why we've updated them. I don't believe any of the other changes that I'm looking at here would really be legal changes, per se.
Thank you. Do you have a follow-up question, Trustee DeRosa?
No, Madam Chair, I think what I've heard was that, that no, we have not gone through that step. So, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, I have the floor.
Sorry, no, no, sorry. You know what, Trustee Antomasi, you, you, because you, you thumbs up yourself, it, it confuses me. So you have the floor.
Through you, Madam Chair. So, I, I'd like to go back to PPM 164. Secretary Daley stated that this particular policy doesn't hinge or is not impacted by our digital technology and digital, digital citizenship is not part and parcel of the requirements for remote learning. PPM 164 is a legislative, legislated directive by the Ministry of Education. Within that particular PPM, there is a specific reference and definition to what is remote learning. And within that particular definition, it breaks it out to synchronous and asynchronous learning, and the effective practices, and how it is to be implemented, and how it is monitored. Use of technology and digital citizenship speaks to the monitoring of PPM 164. There's nothing in this policy that refers to and/or speaks to those requirements under 164. Why are they not included in this particular policy?
I believe Director Daley answered that last part of the question already. But for the rest of your question, Director Daley, did you want to see if you could respond to some of the questions that Trustee Antomasi has raised?
Yeah, maybe I'll just reiterate that Policy I-43, Use of Technology and Digital Citizenship, applies to all uses of technology. So whether it's specific to the elements of PPM 164, or any use of online technology in how we, we teach and learn in our schools. Trustee Ian Tomasi is correct in that there are certain requirements covered under PPM 164 that are specific to remote learning periods. There are best practices suggested in PPM 164 and reporting requirements. We do follow all of those best practices and met the reporting requirements that are, are outlined in the PPM.
Thank you, Director Daley. Trustee Antomasi, do you have a follow-up question?
I do, Madam Chair. So, and I understand that we follow it. But a policy speaks to how we're going to follow something. And as I said, this particular policy fails to address how we will follow technology and digital citizenship within the auspices of remote learning. So it would seem to me that this particular policy should speak to and address those very elements that Secretary, Secretary Daley so eloquently put forward.
So, Trustee Antomasi, then my suggestion is, is if you feel that there's something that's not here, then you have the opportunity to propose something, to implement it, as opposed to asking the same question. Do you have a suggestion to make a change?
Yes.
Good, by all means.
Requirements under remote learning, under PPM 164, which Secretary Daley just alluded to. There are minimums. There are specific steps that have to be undertaken. And I'm saying, it's not included in this policy. Why not include it? Thank you.
So are you asking for us to include it, then? Is that what you're asking for us to talk to all the trustees about to see 164?
Madam Chair, it's not the trustees that put forward this particular policy. It is staff that brings it to us for approval.
I, I understand.
So I'm now bringing forward certain areas that are missing, as I do with most policies. But sometimes staff listens to me and sometimes it, it doesn't. And then I'm overridden by four or five trustees, which don't seem to have the same.
Trustee Ian Tomasi, I think that, that, that that's inappropriate, the comments that you're making. So you've asked for, for PPM 164 for more detail to be put in. I'll ask the trustees if they're in agreement. I'll go to, I'll go around the table. Trustee Agnew?
Uh, no, I'm not.
Okay. Trustee DeRosa? Trustee DeRosa?
I am.
Okay. Trustee Duarte?
Sorry, Madam Chair, can you repeat the question, please?
The question is, is Trustee Antomasi wants staff to go back and put more details on PPM 164, even though, and Director Daley has explained the reference, but Trustee Antomasi would like details on PPM 164 in the policy. So I'm, I'm now, I'm finding out from trustees if they, if that's their wish.
I'm okay with the debate, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella?
In favor?
Okay. Trustee Antomasi is in favor of that. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn Chernotta?
I'm opposed to that.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Okay, I as well am opposed. Moving on to the next speaker, Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
May I have a point?
Do you have the floor, Miss, sorry, Madam Chair? I have the floor.
You do have the floor. Go ahead, Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, Madam Chair, to Bill Crips. Bill, under Consequences Remedial and Disciplinary Action, it says, "Individuals who do not comply with this policy will be subject to appropriate consequences." Then it goes on to mention the consequences, and it does mention one being legal action and prosecution by the relevant authorities. So just to give kind of clarity and maybe an example. So say someone from outside the board took a piece of created information, say a picture that was made by our board staff and for board purposes, and say they took the picture and cropped it or defamed it in some way. Could they be subject to legal action and prosecution by the relevant authorities, as this policy states?
Trustee O'Brien, well, let's see, I'm not sure Director Daley is, is Bill the right person to answer this question. No, I didn't think so. I think this actually, Director Daley, do you think you could, or is there somebody else who might be able to answer it?
Well, I always think I can. Whether or not I can is, is maybe up to some debate. I, I would say in, in that particular scenario, Trustee O'Brien, if I heard it correctly, this policy really, it applies to our students and our staff. It, it, it doesn't apply to the general public. We do have other policies that refer to kind of use of board material, like the board logo and those sorts of things. But in terms of taking legal action, I, I think this policy is more reflective of requirements of students and staff.
Okay.
Do you have a follow-up, Trustee O'Brien?
So just for clarification, what kind of legal action would that look like for staff or students, as mentioned in the policy? Thank you, Madam Chair. Through Director Daley.
Well, it would really, it would depend on what the nature of the, of the, the, the nature of, I don't want to say the crime, but the nature of the action. Obviously, if somebody was using a board technological device or using the board internet system to do something illegal, and it came to the attention of the board, something criminal, then that would be something, if it was something criminal, we, we would have the police investigate it. Again, it depends on what the, what the action is. That'd be obviously at one end of the spectrum. More likely perhaps with, you know, with students, would be inappropriate use of the technology where the consequences might fall more under, you know, progressive discipline and the code of conduct. But I think we all know that, you know, there's cybersecurity issues that go on out there. There's, you know, access to sites or using board information in a way that's for, for a different purpose that I think would, would probably fall under that category. I don't know if that, that's helpful, Trustee O'Brien.
Madam Chair, that, that's very helpful. Thank you, Director Daley. So, people who did something like that, that would probably be covered under another policy.
Do you mean people outside of the board?
Yes.
Yeah, wi, without, I guess I'd have to think through your scenario again. I, I mean, we do have, we do have a policy and we do have ownership over things like our board logo and, you know, it shouldn't be used by anybody at all. It is, you know, I guess it would speak more to kind of copyright laws, and we do have a separate policy with regards to that.
Right, so things created by the board.
Correct.
Thank you, Director Daley.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. Trustee Ian Tomasi, you have a question?
Yes, I have several questions, Madam Chair. So I will begin. So, I'll direct this question to Secretary Daley. So, under requirement for remote learning, remote learning takes place in two forms, synchronous and asynchronous. When we use asynchronous learning, we may be importing taped messages that may or may not fall, be legal. So, my question is, how do we, in this particular policy, address and deal with asynchronous learning, simply because that particular message could be coming from a third party, and it could have incorrect legal terminology? It could have embezzlement issues, for instance, if that particular person providing that training session could have taken that particular training from a third party whom they haven't paid? How do we address that without including PPM 164 into this policy?
So, Trustee Antomasi, we've already, the, the trustees have already decided that we're not going to include any more information on PPM 164.
I'm not asking for including. I'm asking the secretary to the board to explain to me how we would be addressing the issues that I've just raised.
Okay, so Trustee Antomasi, this isn't debate. I didn't interrupt you. I'm going to ask that you not interrupt me. So, we're not going to go back in regards to PPM 164 again. It's, it's, that issue's dealt with. In regards to your questions, I'll see if Director Daley has an answer for them. Director Daley, do you have a, an answer for some of the questions that Ian Tomasi, Trustee Antomasi has raised, without referencing PPM 164?
I, I think it might speak to, under requirements, maybe about halfway down the page, that all users, so that's, and let's, let's, maybe we'll, we'll talk about classroom teachers as an example, but it could be broader than that, are to ensure technologies used to support teaching and learning in accordance with our HCDB, HCDSB, teaching and learning expectations, and that we use technology in a legal, ethical, safe, and responsible matter. So I think that would apply to both synchronous and asynchronous instruction. It would apply to the requirements of PPM 164, or as I said, any other use of technology that we use with regards to classroom instruction or otherwise.
Thank you, Director Daley. Trustee Antomasi, do you have a follow-up question?
Okay, so, what if in synchronous learning, we display the faces of students, and we do not have approval from the parents to post these faces on the internet? How does this particular policy guard against and/or address that?
Thank you. Trustee Antomasi, I believe that's another policy that you're referencing in regards to photography that parents have to sign off on at the beginning of every year.
Madam Chair, you're making assumptions. You're, you're putting my mind. I asked a question. Can we please allow the person that the question was addressed to answer the question? I, I didn't realize you have expertise in this particular field that you can address these questions.
Trustee Antomasi, we're, we're not going to get into this, number one. And number two, you of all people know that the questions are directed to the chair. So, you've reminded us many times that that's who you direct the questions to, is the chair, and then the chair will disseminate the questions to the appropriate person. So in regards to...
That's not the way it works, Madam Chair.
Trustee Antomasi? Trustee Antomasi, that's, that's a warning. Director Daley, are you able to answer the question in regards to pictures of students?
Yeah, I think I can. So again, in that requirement section, right at the end of, at the end of page five of six, or page 12 in the package, ensuring the photos, images, videos, or images of an individual slash group are not posted online, shared digitally unless consent from the individuals or parental consent has been obtained at the beginning of the school year. So that is a process that schools do undertake at the beginning of the school year, and all users, and again, we can speak to whether it's teaching staff or other staff, are responsible for ensuring that that protocol is followed.
Point of clarification, Madam Chair. So does that include training sessions for teachers? They may be using a particular session to train other teachers, board-wide?
So do you mean whether a teacher, I, I'm not sure I understand if you mean a...
So for training purposes?
Yeah.
A teacher has given a lesson?
Yeah.
And she has recorded the lesson?
Yeah.
That particular lesson then is rolled out and used for teaching purposes to other teachers. So does this broad policy address that particular issue, as opposed to just the issue of showing somebody on the internet, whether it be a photo and/or an actual video?
I guess I would say in a broad sense it does, in that the use of technology or tech devices all fall under the use of technology in a legal, ethical, safe, and responsible manner that's in accordance with our teaching and learning expectations.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Daley. Trustee DeRosa, you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a question through you. Since we, I believe we go through this consent process on various activities, including the one we're talking about, which is the use of pictures. Director Daley, how many, how many parents have actually formally submitted their consent at the beginning of the year, allowing us to do this? Do we have an idea?
Thanks for the question, Trustee DeRosa. I, I might ask for some help on this one. We do send the family consent form electronically now, I believe, to all of our parents. I don't know if either Superintendent Bukaiich or maybe one of our family schools superintendents could speak to that?
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. Trustee DeRosa, yes, all parents complete the family consent form process, either electronically... Trustee DeRosa, yes, all parents complete the family consent form process either electronically or if not electronically through the hard copy process that we've had up to and including this year. The family consent form electronically, we were, we were close to, I believe, last count, 27 or 28,000. So we have consent from substantially number of, of parents of students electronically and also in hard copy.
And, and just to add, I think that would more typically be tracked at the school level as those either hard copy or electronic copies came in as opposed to at the board.
May I have a follow-up, Madam Chair?
Yep, go ahead, Madam Trustee DeRosa.
So there's two things that come to mind. If I'm allowed to, to ask, I'll ask both in, in, in one, in one round here. The first thing that comes to mind is for those parents who have not submitted consent, what process do we actually go through in order to make sure that they're not included as part of a particular practice or a particular exercise that would lead to capture the pictures in the classroom with the rest of, with the rest of the kids? Number one. Secondly, the 27,000 that have responded, what percentage of that is of the total population of parents that we have to canvas every year to gain parental consent? Thank you.
Director Daley, do you want to answer that, or do you want Superintendent Bukic?
Maybe I can answer. I'll start with the second part. So that, that 27,000 would, would represent about 75%, give or take of our current student population. And again, that's parents who completed the online or the electronic submission of the consent. As I mentioned before, schools would track consent for their own schools. And again, I, I could probably rely on a family of school superintendent with a little bit more recent experience at the school level in terms of how that process works out. I certainly know that when I'm in schools, if I happen to, if I'm visiting a school and want to take a picture of a class, I'm pretty careful, first of all, about that, but I always, I do ask the teacher, and I've never had a teacher say, "I don't know." A teacher's always said either they're all good to go, or this student, this student, and this student are not. You've probably seen lots of times on social media when our teachers are tweeting out what's going on in their classroom. Oftentimes, students, students are not distinguished, or their face is covered over either with an emoji, or certainly in our current situation, when, you know, when teachers might post a picture of their online class, while the pictures might be there, that the names would be, would be blurred out, but I'll maybe turn that, oh, I, I can't see whose hand is up there to, that's another question from a trustee, or a super, if, if I can, I'll turn it over to Anthony.
Thank you, Director Daley. Through you, Madam Chair. In response to Trustee DeRosa's questions, my past experience has been that you'd have less than 1% of the parent or student population that would ask that their child's picture not be taken. The classroom teachers in the secondary school would be communicated that information, as well as any teacher or staff advisor that would be leading a sports team or an after-school or before-school club or activity as well. Most of the photographs taken during the school year that would appear on the yearbook, that information would be communicated to that teacher who leads the yearbook. And certainly, it would be the responsibility of the school administrators to review photographs that are perhaps tweeted out, or that are posted on the school television screens that are located throughout the building, or that, you know, might be included in, or suggested for, to be included in the yearbook. So it is, it is a process that requires monitoring and communications, but my past experiences have been that that has taken place and quite effectively, and with great sensitivity to the request of the parents and, and sometimes the student.
Madam Chair, just one follow-up.
Go ahead, Trustee DeRosa.
Thank you, Superintendent Cordero. So I've heard two key numbers. The, I've heard 75% response rate. And then I've heard less than 1%. I'm trying to reconcile the two, because one would, one would suppose a 25% rate of people don't agree. And the other one is, frankly speaking, speaks to the fact that most people do agree. So I have a disconnect with those two numbers. Can somebody explain them to me, please?
Yeah, I'll, I'll try, Trustee Tomasi. So the 75% number that I-
Trustee DeRosa, Mr.?
I, I'm sorry.
Director Daley.
Sorry, Trustee DeRosa. Yeah, so the 75% would be if we had 27,000 electronic submissions out of roughly 36,000 students. So that doesn't speak to parents that may have submitted paper copy. So the question, those numbers are specific to the electronic submission of the consent form. I believe the 1% that Superintendent Cordero was referring to was once those forms are submitted, or at least his experience at the secondary level has been when the forms are submitted, less than, or somewhere around 1% of parents ask that their, their children not be included in those photos. So I think that's where those two numbers, or that, that's, that's how those two-
Yeah, I would stand-
Thank you, Director Daley.
Just a comment, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, it's really a worthwhile comment and a positive one. I would suspect that the 75% would speak to the people or to the parents who actually agree to provide expressed consent. What's significant is the 25% who don't respond and don't agree. So thank you very much. I understand the numbers.
But just, just if I may, Madam Chair, just to be clear, the 75% referenced in terms of the electronic submission, that's people who responded electronically. There are also parents who respond in the hard copy as opposed to the electronic submission. So that's 75%. It would be parents who have submitted the consent form via electronic means.
So that supposes that the number is, the response rate's a little higher if we include the paper responses. Do we have a sense of what that number is?
I, I don't, Trustee DeRosa, as I said, typically, or not typically, that, that's something that schools account for. So as those forms would come in, either electronically or on paper, teachers would become aware either of, more typically, they'd become aware of students whose parents said that they didn't want their images shared either online or in those other means. So that would be communicated at the school level. So I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't be able to give you a clear number of the, of the both electronic and hard copy submission.
That's okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So there's no more questions, so we'll take this to a vote. Trustees, Trustee Agnew?
I'm in favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
I'm opposed.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Tomasi?
I'm opposed, Madam.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn-Ternotta?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
I am also in favor, so the policy will be brought to the next board meeting. Thank you, trustees. Moving on to item 5.2, Policy I-43, or sorry, Policy V-03, Photography, Advertising, Sales, and Representatives. Can I have a trustee move that the Policy Committee recommends that Policy V-03 be forwarded along with amendments to the January 18th, 2022 regular board meeting for approval?
I'll move it. O'Hearn-Ternotta?
Moved by Trustee O'Hearn-Ternotta, seconded by Trustee Agnew. Thank you. Superintendent Lofts, 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 oh my goodness. I'm, I'm truly, I'm not thinking of bread. Superintendent Lofts, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, and good evening, Madam Chair and all trustees. We're pleased to present Policy 503, Photography, Advertising, Sales, Representatives. We are presenting this policy with very few changes and are presenting it in front of the trustees for review.
Thank you, Superintendent Lofts. Do we, trustees, I'll open the floor to any questions. Any trustees? I don't see anybody in the chat.
I have my hand up, Madam Chair.
Okay, so it's, sorry, Trustee Tomasi, can I ask that you not thumbs up it? Because then it looks, because I'm trying to manage the chat, it looks as if I've already spoken to you. So Trustee Tomasi, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, everybody's thumbing up that I can see at my end.
Yes, I, I thumb up once I've, I've gone to that speaker so that I can keep track.
No, I'm talking about colleagues. I'm only referring to my colleagues. I see thumbs up everywhere.
Yeah, the thumbs up.
I won't be free from doing that.
Trustee Tomasi, I'm telling you, I'm the one who's doing it because I'm managing the chat group.
All right, so this is a change. Thank you, Madam Chair. So Policy V-03, this particular policy is managed and it's covered under the duties of a principal? That's the question.
That's the question? Okay, yeah, it would be under the duties as a school, running the school. It's a part of the principal. Yes, that is correct.
So-
Do you have a follow-up question, Trustee Tomasi? Do you have a follow-up question?
I do, Madam Chair. So where neglected duty is found in reporting infractions as it pertains to the procedures and protocols of allowing photography, advertising, and sales representatives within the confines of our schools? How do we deal with this in this policy? Where do I find guidance on that?
Superintendent Lofts, are you able to answer that, or?
I, I am not, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Director Daley, do, do you have a response for that?
Just so I understand the question, Trustee Tomasi. So you're saying if, if an individual didn't follow the policy, or went against the policy, or did it in a way that doesn't align with the policy, how, how would we, how would we deal with that?
Yes, procedurally, where in this policy does it guide us on how to deal with it? Or if this particular policy doesn't speak to it, what policy covers the process?
Well, I, I don't think we would have a specific procedure for a transgression in this particular policy. I think if a, if a staff member blatantly disregarded a board policy, that that would be a performance issue that the family of school superintendent would first deal with. And then ultimately, depending on the nature of it, would become a human resources matter.
All right, so let me-
Thank you, thank you, Director Daley. No, Trustee Tomasi, we're moving on to, Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor?
Madam Chair, through you, my question is very simple. Most of the changes that I see here are replacing the word board, which HCDSB. Can somebody give me the logic behind that and the underlying reason? Those two words are used interchangeably in many circumstances, but why are we changing them here?
Okay, Trustee DeRosa, I will get Superintendent Bukic to answer this. But this has been consistently what we have been doing with all of the policies, if you go back, but Superintendent Bukic-
I understand. I'd like to know why.
I'm- Superintendent Bukic, if you can explain the rationale as to why we're changing it from board to HCDSB?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I will try, and as Chair Guzzo has said, this is a practice that has been in place for the last few years. Trustee DeRosa, I will have to defer to Director Daley if he has anything further to add to that.
Director Daley, can you just explain the rationale as to why we've been changing it to HCDSB versus board? Is it just for consistency purpose?
Yeah, and I, I think that, that procedure, or sorry, we, we've made those changes since our, our current board has been constituted.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Director Daley. Trustee DeRosa, do you have a follow-up question?
So actually, I do. The issue, the issue is, and this may be well appropriate, but maybe the description or the change might, might demand a little bit more clarification. When we refer to the HCDSB, we have the board, which is the operating board, which I'm presuming here is what we're referring to when you say HCDSB. But we also have the Board of Trustees, which is a separately constituted body, which has a responsibility for governance and oversight of the operating board. I'm wondering whether there's a better way to clarify that. I'm not opposed to changing, using HCDSB, but it might be appropriate to consider a further specification somehow that we are referring to the operating board in, in the policy and not the Board of Trustees. This might be, might seem a little, a little fickle, but it's an important legal distinction that, that needs to be understood. It is clear that our policies refer to the operating board. I'm wondering whether there's a better way to describe that in the policy and the changes that we're making. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Ian Tomasi, you have the floor?
Yes, through you. To follow up, so if we look at the Education Act and in conjunction with the documents, whether it be policies and whether it be our procedural bylaws, it's stipulated there that the corporate board is who holds the policies. By introducing HCDSB, it does not follow that particular protocol, because it would speak to the operations owning these particular policies. Policies of the elected board and approved, approved by the elected board belong to them. They don't belong to HCDSB. So in keeping with the observation Trustee DeRosa has pointed out, it would follow that we need to return back to the board because, and I've stated this before, I actually stated this in 2019, that we are a separate entity with governance over HCDSB, the operational arm. The reason the operational arm writes policies and comes to us for approval is because they begin, they belong to us, not to HCDSB. So I would think that perhaps we should seek legal input on this particular matter.
So trustees, we'll just take a consensus on who would like to have this policy, I guess, and it would be all policies referred to legal because we've made the changes consistency with all these policies. So I'll just go around the table and ask if you're in agreement to send this off to legal. Trustee Agnew? Okay, Trustee DeRosa?
I'm in favor, Madam Chair. Do I have to pass a motion?
No, no, no motion. Nope. Trustee Duarte?
Not in favor.
Okay. Trustee Carabella?
I was trying to ask a question, Trustee Guzzo, before you started the vote for a point of clarification on-
It's not a vote, it's a consensus. What is your clarification?
Well, I'd like legal on the, on what the question is. I don't think every policy I need to know.
But the change, the change that trustee Antomasi has referenced, and what he said is, we've been consistently changing "board" to "HCDSB," it would impact every policy that we have changed. So we would need to get a legal opinion on HCDSB versus the board. So that's what he's asking for. So.
Okay, then I'm in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Antomasi, in favor?
I'm in favor.
Yeah, I got it, trustee Carabella. Trustee O'Brien?
I'm in favor.
Trustee O'Hearn Chernotta?
No, I'm opposed. Thank you.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
I am also opposed. Moving on, trustee DeRosa?
I'm in favor.
I already, I already asked you, I was going to give you the floor.
Oh, you did, okay. Thought you forgot me there.
Nope, you're up next. Trustee DeRosa?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, you don't have any other questions? Okay. So if we have no further questions, we will take a vote on this. Okay, trustee Antomasi, you have a question?
Yes, I do, Madam, through you. So my question is to whoever wants to address it. How does the board benefit from photography, advertising, and having sales representatives promote products within our organization specifically in each individual school?
Director Daley, I'm not sure who could take this. I'm assuming it would differ from, from different programs to different programs. I don't know if there's a blanket answer that would fit that.
Yeah, I don't think, I couldn't speak to each individual school. I'm not sure if Superintendent Lofts might be able to, to add some light on that.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I don't necessarily have that information available, but what I do have is obviously our students benefit by having photographies into the school, taking pictures, taking pictures of the big events within the schools, the sacraments and such. But it's obviously, just from the photography side alone, a benefit to our students and our community.
Sorry, I was referring, Madam Chair, clarification.
What is your clarification question, trustee Antomasi?
I was really addressing, or referring to specifically to advertising and sales representatives working within the confines of our individual schools.
I don't know if Superintendent Lofts or Director Daley, I don't know that we would have that information, because I think it would be dealt with through individual schools.
Through you, Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
There's a process in place. If somebody comes to our school wishing to do some form of advertising, there's actually a department to kind of look at that and see the benefits of it to our community. And again, this is a policy that hasn't been in place for a number of years.
Thank you, Superintendent Lofts. You're actually, you're correct. We did, when this policy, I think this is the, the second time this policy has come, and when Superintendent Balo was actually the superintendent on this, we had a conversation in regards to advertisements. So, trustee Antomasi? What's your follow-up?
So my follow-up is that if there is a case of impropriety, for instance, false advertising or, and/or false salesmanship, where the product that you contract for is not delivered, how do we address this particular scenario under this policy?
Superintendent Lofts or Director Daley? I'm not sure.
May I add something, Madam Chair? None of the associated policies and procedures would address that, which is the reason why I'm bringing it to the table.
Through you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Similar to any form of breach of contract that we have as a, as an organization, we would pursue that option and look at it from a legal perspective.
Thank you, thank you, Superintendent Lofts. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to comment as someone who has actively been involved with school council for a number of years, and I can speak from experience that anytime we've had someone come in and present to staff or present to the council, so perhaps it could be with regards to a lunch program, or an extracurricular activity for kids, or an after-school program, or whatever that might be, that the process, strictly that's the individual who will be coming in to speak with us, both at a board level and then at a local, and then at a school level. So, you know, I can just speak to the validity of the process, again, from my experience sitting on council for a number of years, of having those individuals come in and present to council so that we can see some alternatives that might be out there for programs and make a decision as council on whether or not we want to move forward. So I actually think having the ability of sales representatives to come in and present some of these options to us is extremely valuable, and many schools have benefited from, from that process. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, through you. I'm just curious, we must have representatives walking our corridors who have been effectively approved, if you will. Would we have a list of those agents or representatives that are actually in our schools currently? And do they have free rein? Do they, can they come in anytime they want, or do they have to advise staff? Or what's the process?
Thank you, trustee DeRosa. I'll let Director Daley answer this, but I think right now, nobody's wondering any schools except for staff, so.
I should hope not.
Yeah, thanks for the question, trustee DeRosa. Actually, no one has free rein to wander the school. I don't have free rein to wander the school. Ultimately, any visitor or somebody who comes to the school, it has to be with a purpose. In the case of someone who might be providing photography services, or maybe another vendor who a school's engaged to, you know, do sweatshirts or athletic gear, those sorts of things, that'd be done in conjunction with the principal and possibly the school council, and them entering the building to do business, if we want to use that terminology, would be done under the auspices of the school principal.
Thank you, Director Daley. Trustee DeRosa, do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, Madam Chair. This might be a stretch, but I'll ask it anyways. Is there a list of approved suppliers that may be invited in at any point in time by the principals or is there a repository of individuals who have been vetted and who we do business with?
I think Superintendent Lofts addressed it that, I think you might have mentioned Superintendent Lofts, that there's a protocol that has to be followed?
Yeah, I'd appreciate his answer to hear his, his answer to my question, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, is there a repository of vendors? Other, I guess, I'm not sure, trustee DeRosa, if we're going down vendors in general, are we talking just vendors that come in to fix the HVAC, or are we talking vendor-specific that the school might have looked into for bringing in for photography and whatnot?
It's probably the latter, Superintendent Loft.
That's what I thought as well. We do have in certain situations, certain vendors that are approved as well, depending on the situation. So we look at photographers and such. But again, a lot of these examples that we're talking about here are kind of one-offs and things that are kind of unique to the school councils that they may look at as well, and school councils, like trustee Agnew mentioned earlier, are involved in bringing some of these, per se, groups in to speak to the school community. So there isn't a catch-all, one list that's our one centrally organized list that fits all situations. We don't have something like that, no.
Yeah, follow-up, Madam Chair?
Thank you. Actually, there's somebody else in the line, trustee DeRosa, that was your follow-up, so we're going to move on to trustee Antomasi.
Put myself back on the, on the list. Thank you.
Madam Chair, thank you. Through you. I heard Superintendent Lofts referred to as "we" with reference to.
The board.
Yet, schools operate independently. Contracts, advertising, and sales take place at each individual school. Why would the board be responsible? Why would it be "we" that would have to defend when this particular policy is devoid of any procedures and protocols that would address how the individual schools would conduct themselves insofar as advertising and dealing with sales? Furthermore, school councils, which I've been, I was a longstanding member for many years, have no direct authority in hiring anyone. It's the principal, they only make recommendations to the principals. It's the principal that actually fulfills the contractual agreement with individuals that come into the schools. So again, I fail to see where this particular policy safeguards the board. We, as trustees, are only here to protect the board, addresses these particular instances.
Thank you, trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I was looking for an answer from the secretary. Thank you.
Trustee Antomasi, I, we didn't hear a question, I heard a statement, and we've already gone through the HCDSB.
There were a multitude of questions within my statement, Madam Chair.
I am actually speaking, trustee Antomasi, you're interrupting once again. You can't have it both ways. You can't want to be heard and listened to if you're not going to do, give the same. The question has already been discussed, and we've already had a consensus vote on HCDSB versus "board." We're not going to go down that road again, so we're going to move on.
That's not what I'm asking, Madam Chair. You're, you're misinterpreting my question. My question is specific to.
What is your specific question then, trustee Antomasi, because I'm not quite sure.
My specific question, I won't reassert my question, Madam Chair. My question is specific to the comment and the response made by Superintendent Loft. He stated that we would deal with any fraud that would be a result of advertising or false sales or a contract not being fulfilled. And I stated, because we are the board, and we're not the individual school who enters into these agreements, how is the board responsible for these particular mishaps? Those are my questions, Madam Chair.
And trustee Antomasi, I will pass your question on to Director Daley, and I would appreciate you lowering your voice. I will not tolerate yelling. Trust, Director Daley, could you answer that last part of the question that trustee Antomasi has asked?
Yeah, and I don't think trustee Antomasi is suggesting that we would leave principals out on their own to undertake legal action on their own. We'd certainly, in the case where there was a problem with a contract at the school level, we'd certainly guide and support those principals. And by "we," I mean the staff, whether it's staff in purchasing, staff in Superintendent Loft's department. So I don't think he's suggesting that. Trustee Antomasi is correct in that at the individual school level, contracts can be made with, with certain vendors. We, we ask principals to refer to our purchasing procedures with regards to that. A little bit more to trustee DeRosa's question regarding, is there kind of preferred vendors or vetted vendors? It really depends on, sometimes on, on the, the nature of the services offered. So for things like extended trips, those vendors, there is a kind of a vetted list of, of travel companies that schools would be able to access. They, that would have went through an RFP process to get on that list, to be able to meet certain requirements as established by, by the board.
Follow-up question, Madam Chair?
Follow-up question, trustee Antomasi?
Thank you. So, secretary Daley, thanks for your points of clarifications. My question is specific. When HCDSB gets sued, it's not HCDSB operation that gets sued, it's the corporate entity who holds all the assets. My question again is, if the individual school is sued, or vice versa, why is it "we," if we do not, given the fact that policies belong to the board, how do we safeguard procedurally from that happening at the local level?
Trustee Antomasi, that has been asked and answered. Trustee, Director Daley just answered that. We're going to move on to trustee DeRosa. Trustee DeRosa?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. And this is just a point of clarification, and I, in good faith, assumed the answer, what the answer is going to be, but conflict of interest guidelines view that some of these activities, and to some extent, rightfully so, some of these activities are local activities for the purpose of assigning, assigning contracts or dealing with contractors. I'm assuming along the way that we are making sure that conflict of interest guidelines are followed with rigor. Is that right, Mr. Director Daley? Or Superintendent Loft? I don't know.
Sorry, maybe I'll jump in. Certainly, our purchasing procedure, whether it's at the board or the more local level, does speak to conflict of interest.
Thank you. Trustee Antomasi, you have a question? And after trustee Antomasi, we're going to wrap this up. We're going to take it to a vote.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. So, insofar as school funds, school-generated funds, if the funds go missing, secretary, this question for secretary Daley, who is responsible? If the funds that go missing, parents, specifically parent, Catholic Parent Council comes asking for those money, who's responsible for planning to receive those monies?
Point of order?
Sorry, trustee Agnew, what is your point of order?
I just fail to understand how that question or that topic has anything to do at all with photography, advertising, and sales representatives, which is the policy here in front of us. So I would, I would question why we are having that conversation.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. I, I agree, trustee Antomasi, that, that question is not specific. Sorry, trustee Antomasi, again, I'm speaking, please don't interrupt. That question is not relevant to the policy that we're speaking at, so I would ask either.
May I, may I provide you with clarifying information that would speak to why it's relevant?
It would have to be in regards to photography, advertising, and sales representatives regarding this specific policy. It does not talk about parent.
There are deposits.
School-generated funds.
Yes, so school-generated funds have two forms. A deposit form.
Trustee, trustee Antomasi, please do not try to mansplain to me what school-generated funds are, and there are two points. Do you have a question specific to this policy?
I have to give you clarifying position.
No, I just want your, I just like your question. You don't need to, you don't need to clarify.
And I'm sorry that, that I'm a man, but I will speak as a man. Thank you. So my question is.
What is your question?
What happens to deposits if they go missing specifically to advertising, photography, anything that comes to the coffers of the local school?
Point of order, Madam Chair, point of order?
Yes.
Comment on this again, but that has nothing to do with the policy at hand. There's nothing in here with respect to money, deposits, school-generated funds, spending funds. This is simply a policy with respect to, as it states, photography, advertising, and sales representatives. I'd appreciate if we keep the line of questioning specific to this policy, and if not, we take it to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Anto, our trustee Agnew. I, I, once again, I agree, I've already ruled in that question is not specific. So if we do not have any further questions.
I'll appeal your ruling, Madam Chair.
Trustee Antomasi, you appeal my ruling? Okay, no problem. Let's take it to a vote. So, trustee Agnew?
I'm opposed to the appeal. Uh, I'm opposed to the appeal.
Trustee DeRosa?
Madam Chair, I'm in favor in the interest of...
Thank you, trustee Duert. Trustee Carabella? Trustee Carabella?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you heard me, I said in favor.
Oh, sorry, no, did not. Trustee Antomasi?
In favor, Madam Chair.
Trustee O'Brien?
I'm opposed to the appeal.
Trustee O'Hern Chernotta?
Chair Guzzo, could I just get a quick summary? There was so much back and forth, I kind of lost my train of thought. Summary we're voting on now?
So we're voting on, trustee Antomasi has appealed my decision to, to not allow his line of questioning as it's not relevant to the policy at hand, was my ruling, so he's appealed my decision.
This policy, V-03, okay, so I'm opposed to the appeal, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Thank you, I'm also opposed, appeal fails. We will move now to a vote on the policy as presented. Trustee DeRosa?
Come back, Madam Chair.
Trustee Duert?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
I'm opposed.
Trustee O'Hern Chernotta?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
I'm opposed, Madam Chair.
Trustee Antomasi?
I am opposed, Madam Chair.
And I am also in, oh, sorry, trustee Agnew?
In favor?
And I am also in favor, so the policy passes and will be presented to the next forward meeting. Moving on to item 5.3. Policy V-15, Environmental Stewardship. Trustees, as if you recall, this was the policy that we discussed at the last meeting. And some trustees had asked that, we have some time to, to, to further have some information. I believe also we have this evening with us, Sherry Savell is on, if we have any questions, because I know some questions were raised last policy meeting. So can I have a motion that the policy committee recommends that policy V-15, Environmental Stewardship, be forwarded to the January 18th, 2022 regular board meeting for approval? Trustee Agnew? Moved by trustee Agnew, seconded by...
Duert.
Trustee Duert, thank you. So we have, so I don't think there's been any changes since the last meeting. Director Daley, I see you're on, but maybe, hi, Sherry, welcome. Lovely to have you. Maybe Sherry can speak to some of the, some of the language and why it is the way it is, so that it's clarifying for, for trustees, so we can move forward on this policy. Are you okay with that, Sherry? Thank you so much, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year as well. One of the reasons why that, that indigenous traditional knowledge, I believe we called it there, I can't see the full thing, was included in there is because, yes, traditional ecological, ecological knowledge is because indigenous people are the stewards of the land. They are the original stewards of, of this territory. And I really thought that it was important that we included that, not only do we do the land acknowledgement, and not only we, not only are we educating under ministry mandate for indigenous education as well as the Truth and Reconciliation Calls to Action 62, 63, and 64. And with traditional ecological knowledge, it, it's really is environmental stewardship. And, and to have that in there, just, just an addition in a sense, or just for further, for further information, that we can also have, have more knowledge about what that is. And it is an environmental stewardship. And so I'm just, I'm hoping that I've answered that question, and I, I'm very curious as to what other questions that you may have for me. And it was just more to the point of indigenous people being stewards of this land.
Thank you so much, Sherry, and thank you for, for joining us this evening. I'm sure there's going to be some, some more questions. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Shievel. I was, I'm the one that was asking about that, the traditional ecological knowledge, because, so is it written down somewhere? Is it, you know, is it oral, or is it something that's written down? That, you know, where you can click on it and get some more concrete description of what would that all involve and entail and include?
Yes, and through, thanks for the question. The last name is Sevo, Sherry Sevo. And, and through you, Madam Chair, traditional ecological knowledge is not, not only is, is included in here, but it also is part of, of the Ministry of Indigenous Relations and Reconciliation with the Ontario Government, and is also, also part of the parks, Canada Parks. And there is university degrees that are on traditional ecological knowledge, not only at University of Guelph and McMaster, but right across the, right across the country. And we can actually, our students can actually have that pathway, not our just indigenous students, but other students as well, can have that pathway to go into traditional ecological knowledge. And, and it's right across, this is right across the country, it's not my language, and, and it is written down with numerous academic and scholarly, scholarly articles. And so I hope that answered your question.
Thank you, Sherry. Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up question?
Thank you, my follow-up question would be then, so, okay, so it's a vast amount of knowledge that's written down. Okay, I didn't understand that, if it was in a reference, and we usually, we usually just have a link or something, so that's what I was kind of looking for. So there's nothing like that, that gives, you know, a summary.
Not on that link, but I can certainly provide you a link.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, first of all, I'd like to thank Sherry for her participation tonight. I have a, I'm really in a quest to understand the scope and the meaning of environmental stewardship as being the original custodians, indigenous people being the original custodians of this responsibility for the land. To what extent does that concept cross over to, you know, development issues, building of schools issues, areas in which, in which are slated for development? If you can clarify that for me, that would be okay.
Thank you for the question, and through you, Madam Chair. There is a Supreme Court decision, and it's called the Haidean Taku Supreme Court decision, that indigenous community, communities must be consulted when there is development, and when we are on sensitive land. We know that in Halton, there is an awful lot of development that's happening. And we also know that there has been numerous people, and numerous, numerous findings with artifacts. And Six Nations and Mississauga's credit have environmental stewardships that will come out and, and consult on those findings. So it does have, it does have a very important role to play when we are uncovering artifacts, and especially in Halton and in this area, where we know that indigenous people have walked on, on this, on this area that we are on. We don't have to look very far when we look at Crawford Lake, where it is a 4,000-year-old, 4,000-year-old village. And so, but it's, it is the Supreme Court decision, trustee DeRosa, and it's through the Haidean Taku, and all governments in, right across the country are to adhere to that Supreme Court decision.
Thank you, thank you, Sherry. Trustee DeRosa, do you have a follow-up question?
No, Madam Chair, quite clear.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair, to Sherry. And, but I want to just kind of comment on trustee Carabella's questions. I, I think there's a danger often in thinking that these native spirituality doesn't coincide with our Catholic beliefs. And this policy references La Dati C, I, I've gone through La Dati C, and, and I see some real strong similarities. I'm, I'm looking at the section on ecological conversion, where it, it talks about ecological spirituality. And my, I want to just put it out to Sherry, I mean, in the policy, it talks about traditional ecological knowledge, sacredness of the earth. Sherry, do you see that as, as being very synergistic with our, this concept of the Pope saying, talking about ecological spirituality, do you see any similarities there? Because I certainly do, but I want your comment on that.
I think we, thanks for the question, and through you, Madam Chair. I believe one of your schools are named after an, an, an ecological person, Thomas Merton, as well as Saint Francis of Azizi. And so, so even though that, so I'm, I cannot speak to that piece exactly, but I know that your schools are named after certain people who have that ecological spirituality.
Thank you.
Do you have a follow-up question, trustee O'Brien?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Ian Tomasi?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair, welcome, Sherry, Happy New Year. My question is, how do we move beyond eco-colonialism into indigenous stewardship?
That, thanks for that question. It's kind of like, how, how do we move beyond cognitive imperialism? So it, it's a big, it's a big question, and, but when we look at, we do the land acknowledgement, and we can go beyond what that land acknowledgement is. And that's what we've been doing within our own departments, within different schools, and different professional developments that we're having, is moving beyond that land acknowledgement. What does the, what does the environment do for us? Well, how can we protect it? We know that we're, and going into an environmental crisis. How are we preparing our students? How are we preparing ourselves? And so those are kinds of, some of the things and questions that, and the critical mindset that would be, that would be, that we would talk about. I'm, I've never made this word, this term up. This is an academic term that came from various thought leaders, various academics, and various people who deal within that colonial perspective.
Yes, thank you, so...
Do you have a follow-up question, trustee Antomasi?
I do, Madam Chair. So when I speak to eco-colonialism, I refer to the government of Canada, or any government for that matter, that take a piece of land and they dedicate it and say, you know, this land is going to be for the use of people, and it must be conserved. The reason I attach eco-colonialism is that, that to me would suggest that the uses of those parks are for your rank and file, for society as a whole. So when I reference that, I would bring it back to indigenous people. How do indigenous people see that particular action by the government of Canada, the provincial government, or any? How do you feel as an indigenous representative about how we go about declaring a park and its uses, and stipulating its uses?
First off, Sherry, that's, it's not really relevant to this policy, so if you are not comfortable with answering that question, you, you don't have to.
I don't mind, I don't mind answering it. I, I, that's a, that's a really good question, trustee Antomasi. And it's a, and it's a, a larger question and a larger answer. When we start having personal, I would answer it from a personal perspective, and answering it from that indigenous perspective, knowing what I know with my, with the years that I've been doing this work, and, and knowing that indigenous people had, prior to colonization, had all of the land, and had welcomed people, and, and had, and had relationships with people to help them through a lot of the things that they were unfamiliar with this territory. When we look at how Canada is set up now, indigenous people have 0.02% of the land. So something has gone a shift here. And we know it is through colonization, we know it's through various government policies. But when we are looking also at restoring or reclaiming land, it is land that was already indigenous land, and I know this is not part of this policy and not part of what this conversation is. But when we are looking at the, the land that indigenous people have access to, was just a small morsel of what the Canadian government gave them, under the signing of the treaties. This is not something that indigenous people wanted to go onto reserves and to be excluded from Canadian economy. And it was the federal government that put people on reserves and gave them the, the poorest of the land, to not even be able to support ourselves. So when we look at a larger portions, and even scientists now are looking at indigenous knowledge, knowing that we, that indigenous people would actually scarify, uh, scarify the land for, for burning, to rejuvenate the land, when we know that global warming, and if they just looked at and talked to indigenous elders up north, of looking the way of the migration of the animals and the fish and the sea mammals. So, you know, they, so indigenous people have been here for 30,000 years, more than 30,000 years, as creation stories say, that they, that we've been placed here. But when you've lived in harmony with the land for as long as indigenous people have, I, I think that they would be the, the people to be also part of the environmental stewardship within our board, and their, and their ideas and values and beliefs.
Thank you, Sherry. Trustees, if there's no more questions, well, thank you very much, Sherry, for, for coming, and thank you for your wisdom as always, and, and your input, it is, it, it's truly amazing. I always learn something new when you're around, so thank you.
Thank you.
Trustees?
Trustee Guzzo, I did have my hand up there.
Okay, go ahead, trustee Carabella, you have the floor, sorry, Sherry, I, I, you're not off the hook just yet.
Thank you, sorry about that, I, I thought you went to trustee Antomasi to give everyone a turn, but I had my hand up there before him. So I, I just wanted to ask you quickly, Sherry, and sorry, my apologies for mispronouncing your last name. I, one of the things I wanted to ask about was the reference to the sacredness of the earth. And I brought this up last time, that, that traditional theology sees that creation, sees the creation as good but not sacred, because sacred means something set apart for the worship of God. Creation reveals something of God's glory, but is not divine. And I, I'm wondering if there's another way we could phrase that so that our policies are clear, that we're, you know, that the earth isn't sacred, but something like inherent value of the earth or inherent goodness of creation, something like that, to just make it clear. What do you think? I, I don't know who, who chose that word, or if you have a comment about that.
I wouldn't have a comment, because my comment would be different. My comment would be that creation is, is, is sacred to, to everyone. If it wasn't for creation, we wouldn't be here. And so it is, it is that sacredness of, of creation. And because I am not theological, I wouldn't know how to answer, answer that question. But from the point of view from indigenous... But from the point of view from indigenous perspective, that everything in creation is sacred. If we, if we didn't have, if we didn't have the trees, if we didn't have the water, if we didn't have plants and animals, we need those in order to sustain us. We are not above creation. Humans are not above creation. And we, and the environment and humans are, humans, if, if humans didn't exist, creation would still, would thrive. So I don't really know how to answer that because I would come from it from a different, a different point of view.
No, no worries, Sherry. Thank you. And we know that this is a collaboration and, and this specific policy is environmental stewardship. So trustee, trustee Carabella, if, you know, you had asked for, for this to come back and, and we've done that. So if you're proposing a change, then I suggest you propose a change. Staff have already given their input on what they think this should be. So if you're proposing a change, please, by all means, let us know and we can, we can go through a consensus to see if the rest of the trustees agree with it.
Okay, so I would propose a change. I mean, I think that, you know, in a sense, we have to be on guard against pantheism as well, that God is in everything and everything is God. That's not correct. That's not our Catholic faith. And God created the world, it says in the creation, and it was good. And when God created life, it was very good. So I think there should be a distinction. That's why I was offering another suggestion. I would then see if there would be consensus to either we think of some other terms for that or we can go with inherent goodness of creation.
Sorry, so can you, can you tell me exactly where you're looking to put that in, trustee Carabella?
So instead of the sacredness of the earth.
Okay, hold on, where, like, what page is?
The page is on, page two of five.
Got it there. So it's the first bullet, the sacredness of the earth. So you're suggesting, so it says sacredness of the earth, living in harmony with all of God's creation, understanding traditional ecological knowledge. So you're, you want, instead of the sacredness of the earth, you want to replace it with?
Inherent goodness of creation.
So even though the next line says, living in harmony with all of God's creation?
Yeah.
So you would suggest just strike out the sacredness of the earth? Okay, so trustees, we'll, we'll ask for a consensus. We, we've, we know what staff's feedback is and we've heard from Sherry as well. So are we in agreement with trustee Carabella's changes, trustee Agnew?
I oppose.
Trustee DeRosa?
Madam Chair, why don't you come back to me? I feel very little qualms to make a decision on this. Thanks.
Trustee Duarte?
I'm opposed.
Trustee Carabella, I'm assuming you're in favor. You've made the change. Trustee Ian Tomasi?
I am opposing, Madam Chair.
Trustee O'Brien?
I would agree. I would say it does bring us closer to La Dati Sea. Thank you.
O'Hern Chernotta?
I'm opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
I'm opposed. I would rather we get a theological opinion before we made those changes. But if I have to rule or ask to vote on trustee Carabella's change, I'm opposed.
Okay, thank you. Trustee DeRosa?
I'm of the same position, Madam Chair, but I will abstain.
Okay, so trustee Carabella, it's, there's no consensus to make that change. So seeing there's no further questions, we'll go ahead and have a vote on the policy as presented. Trustee Agnew?
Sorry, in favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
For consistency purposes, I will abstain.
Okay, trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
It's good, I think, for a minute. I'll get back, get back to me. Thank you.
Trustee Ian Tomasi?
Abstention, Madam Chair.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hern Chernotta?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
I am also in favor. The policy passes and will be brought to the next board meeting. Again, thank you, Sherry, for, for coming this evening and, and for all your input. Moving on to item 5.4, policy B-17. Can I have somebody move, please, that the policy committee recommends a policy B-17 before, along with amendments to the January 18th, 2022 regular board meeting for approval?
I'll move it, O'Hern Chernotta.
Thank you. Seconded by?
Duarte.
Trustee Duarte, thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a point of order.
Can you state what your point of order is?
You keep referring to 5.4, 5.2, and so on. You're referring to 6.4?
Okay, thank you. Trustee Duarte, sorry, seconded. So we've got Superintendent Bukic. You have the floor.
Thank you and through you, Madam Chair. Our purpose is to provide for the consideration of the policy committee revisions to policy V-17, request for promotion and distribution of program and/or activity-related materials through board schools as recommended by staff. The policy was reviewed as part of the regular review cycle and minor changes and amendments have been made. The purpose has been updated to include language consisted with the associated procedure and the appendices Form A and B. A reference has been added and minor edits have been made throughout for clarity. The revised policy VI-17, V-17, request for promotion and distribution of program activity-related materials through board schools is attached for review and consideration by the policy committee. Happy to take any questions trustees may have.
Thank you. Trustees, I'll open up the floor for any questions. Okay, seeing none, we'll take it to a vote. Thank you. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Ian Tomasi?
Abstain, Madam Chair.
Trustee O'Hern Chernotta?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
I am also in favor. Thank you very much. This item will be moved to the next meeting. Moving on, we have item, that's it for our action items. We're moving on to discussion items. So this is item 7.1, information security. So this will be for a new draft policy. And if I'm not mistaken, if we can just scroll down, thank you. Keep scrolling, keep scrolling. Yes, okay. I think we have Mark Grusick here with us again this evening. Welcome, Mark. I will hand over to you for discussion.
Thank you and through you, Madam Chair. Happy New Year, everyone. Hope everyone's had a good holiday, a good break. Thank you for allowing me here to present a new proposed information security policy. The purpose of this policy is, is to really address the, the information security requirements that, that do not exist in other HCDSP policies and to really be as clear as we can with regard to taking reasonable steps, and the key word here is reasonable, to ensure that we are protecting the confidentiality, integrity and availability of Halton Catholic District School Board data and information systems. And so I will hand it over. Happy to take any questions about it.
Okay, thank you, Mark. So this is a draft policy. And right now, currently, it's for discussion, for us to discuss and to provide some input to Mark and staff so that they can go back and bring it back, I guess, as an action item. And then we can go through the proper readings, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, perfect. Okay, that being said, so again, we'll keep this light. What we'll do is, is we'll, we'll kind of limit it to questions. Mark is our resident expert, so, so I'm sure he's, he's set us up on the right path. However, we will start with the questions and we'll try to keep this moving, knowing that this will be discussed again as an action item. So starting with trustee Ian Tomasi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mark, Happy New Year to you. So when we decide on a policy, there's specific steps. Generally speaking, there's about seven steps to a policy. The first step would be identifying the issue and building a policy to address that issue. Would you agree with me?
Yes, I would agree with you.
All right. So can you please tell the board so that we understand, who identified this issue?
Thank you for the, for the question. I, myself, as, as a practitioner, I joined the board, as you know, two years ago. One of the first things I saw, did not see, was a security policy or a policy that really spoke to the security requirements. Now, I'm not saying we, like I said, we don't, we have policies and procedures. We have security baked into a lot of our policies and procedures. But it's not really, in my, what I'm saying is, we don't have it and, and, and I would have expected to see that. And that's really the foundation of, of implementing any kind of security program or, or culture, is you really need to have, have, have that policy. So I, my observation is that it was not, it was never clear. So I'm presenting it for discussion and, and, you know, more questions and we'll see what we can do to address any concerns that you may have.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you. That's why we have you now, right, is to identify these holes. Trustee Ian Tomasi, do you have a follow-up question?
I do, Madam Chair. So, so you identified the issue. So you've now provided what I would seem to think, or it seems to me, is what would be considered a draft policy development?
That is correct, trustee Ian Tomasi.
So why wouldn't we get a scoping report that would go out to operations that would establish why this is needed, which would then help to set up the draft policy development? And, and, Mark, this is not directed at you. It seems to me that every policy we either create, every policy that gets handed down to us by the ministry or any policy that requires vetting, updating and including new policies, it's done haphazardly. So I hope you don't take this personal. I'm not trying to direct this at you, but it seems that the, this particular information gets put into our policy meeting. We get given it. We really can't do much with it until it's presented so that we understand what needs you have from an operational point of view. And then we go on and most of the times we approve it because, you know, five people dictate the day at our board.
Trustee Ian Tomasi, trustee Ian Tomasi, I'm going to stop you there. You've made now, that's going to be your second comment, that is, is.
I'm going to make more comments, Madam Chair.
No, you know what?
Title to make comments. Can you show me where in our bylaw says that I can't make comments?
You cannot, you cannot make comments on how people vote and how they decide to vote. And you have now referenced five.
Yes, I can, Madam Chair.
Five trustees, this is.
Show me where, show me where.
Third warning. It's under Robert's Rules of Order and it's under our bylaws and Code of Conduct.
Show me where. Can you please cite the?
I don't have to show you where, trustee Ian Tomasi. I'm actually chairing the meeting. So you.
Yeah, so the chair has to establish what policy or procedure I'm not following.
And you will be removed.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Trustee DeRosa, unless you have a point of order, you do not have the floor and have not been recognized.
I, I know I haven't been recognized, but I need to catch your attention because I want to express a point of privilege. I'll leave the decision to you.
What is your point of privilege specifically?
Madam Chair, I, in order for me to come to conclusions on the debates.
Okay, sorry, that's not a point of privilege, trustee DeRosa. You do not have.
Well, you're doing the same thing with me. You're not making me.
It's not a point of privilege. You have, you're in the queue. You will get your chance to speak. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you to, to Mark. Happy New Year, Mark. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
So one of the, one of the things that caught my eye was that, my understanding is that not all our teaching staff or, or all of our staff have board-supplied hardware, board computers or ThinkPads or what have you. So it seems that we'd be in a bit of a challenge to control the applications and the systems and the security of the information on their personal devices. So I guess the first question is, am I wrong or are there, is there a requirement for some staff to use their own devices? And if so, then what can we do in relation to the security of the information, of board information that would then be stored on those devices?
Thank you, trustee Murphy. So great, great question. So to really speak to the, 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 the number of devices that are in use, Bill Crips is actually the best person to speak to that. But, you know, Bill's on the phone, he might be able to provide some comments to, to that. But yeah, because I can't really comment on, on what is rolled out into, within our organization.
Thank you. Trustee Murphy, do you have a follow-up?
I guess, yeah, I'd like to hear, I always like to hear from Bill. It's always informative and we see Bill there. So basically, is it, do, do teach, are there teachers that have to use their personal devices? And, and then how do we control the security of that information?
Thank you, trustee. See you again and through you, Madam Chair. So yes, recently, we have developed a, I'm going to call it a procedure in supplying teaching staff, a board-provided laptop. And this is really to, you know, obviously support a lot of the, you know, online learning that's going through right now. And with these devices that we are providing staff, similar to how we've provided board trustees laptops and even students in certain situations, laptops as well. They do come with encryption standards and a lot of, I'm going to call them, remote management tools that allow us to better secure these devices to keep board information safe. Like trustees know, we do utilize, you know, two large cloud platforms. Both, both platforms come with a lot of security features as well to help keep our information safe, you know, through a lot of governance procedures that Mark and myself put forward to, you know, help ensure the data of our organization is kept safe. When it does come to personal devices, that's where we put together, you know, a lot of recommendations for staff on how to keep their devices safe and secure. We do recommend, you know, encryption technologies, whether it be Mac or PC, that they do help use, but they also have to understand that keeping the information that the board has safe and secure is very important. And that's why we do, yeah, a lot of cyber awareness training or other training around, you know, board data and information on, you know, being sure it is kept, you know, in safe and secure places and not sort of kept, I want to say, in a car, you know, with the windows rolled down. So that's sort of a few of the areas around how we sort of work with that technology.
Thank you, Bill. Trustee Murphy? Uh, thank you, Bill. Trustee Murphy, do you have a, a follow-up?
So just if, if I understand that, um, currently not all staff that require devices have devices, but we're moving in that direction, is that correct? And if so, what's our, what's our timeframe look like?
So when you refer to staff, that's, that's a challenging question. Because, uh, we would have staff who are, uh, occasional in nature, who we may not be providing devices to. We may have staff as well who, you know, really, um, you know, aren't, I'm going to call it required to use a, you know, computer for maybe five, six hours a day. They could be maybe in a position inside of our organization where all they do are check their email three or four times daily. So, staff is a difficult word to put in place. What I would say around that is we do have technology available inside of our schools for them. So there are, uh, desktops and possibly laptops available in libraries, workrooms, uh, staff rooms for, let's say, staff who aren't going to be assigned a dedicated laptop to have technology available to them.
Uh, it makes sense, but, but for teaching staff, how are we there? I think that's the more critical concern that I have.
Thank you. So through you, Madam Chair, um, for teaching staff, yes, we do have an initiative underway, in working with superintendent crawl and curriculum, we do have a plan in place for teaching staff to be provided a board-issued laptop. Uh, we have currently outfitted, um, our schools with a, around just under, I'm going to call it 2,000 laptops for teachers right now. And when we do talk about teachers, there is also a, I'm going to call it wide range of, um, teaching job titles here. But right now, we do have this initiative underway and it is currently deployed. And as schools, I'm going to call it, uh, feel that they have been shorted, you know, to just call it what it is. We are working through verifying inventory, school counts, and then being sure we can get them a laptop as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
So Madam Chair, I put myself in the lineup to ask a question. Um, but I would also state my point of order now that I have a chance without, without any interruption. And I will gladly, uh, use my time to ask the question I had in mind. So do I have permission to do that?
Trustee DeRosa, I have given you the floor. You can ask your questions in regards to this policy.
I would like.
And in, and in regards to, you didn't state a point of order, you stated a point of privilege and you.
Point of privilege. My apologies, a point of privilege.
Yeah.
I know it's different. I'm asking you whether I can state it now.
For to ask your questions. This is a discussion.
Can I state my point of privilege, Madam Chair?
Ask your questions in regards to the information, uh, uh, security to Mark.
So I cannot state my point of privilege, is that the case?
It's not a point, it's not a point of privilege.
No, I am making a distinction, Madam Chair. And I would really respectfully ask that you seriously consider what I'm asking. Because I am not doing this frivolously, nor am I doing it to disrupt the meeting. But I have my rights and I'd like to state them because you have the daunting task of balancing debate. So I'm asking you, would you like to hear my question first because I'm in line? And then my point of privilege or vice versa? You make the call.
I've asked for you, you have the floor for your question in regards to this policy.
Will I get the opportunity for my point of privilege, Madam Chair?
If it is a point of privilege, we will deal with it as a point of privilege. Uh, you have the floor to ask your question.
Would you like to ask to make it now or later?
Trustee DeRosa, this is the last time I'm going to state, ask your question. And if you have a point of privilege, you can raise your point of privilege afterwards. As long as it is a point of privilege as defined under our bylaws and under Robert's Rules of Order.
Will I have an opportunity while I'm stating my point of privilege to finish it?
Trustee DeRosa, a point of privilege is very specific. It is not a long question or a long statement. It is very much, this is a point of priv, trustee DeRosa, you asked me something.
Madam Chair, can you clarify what it is for me? Excuse my ignorance, please educate.
Just, just one second, I'm going to pull it up right now.
Yep.
Just give me one second, trustee DeRosa.
No problem.
Thank you, trustee DeRosa for, uh, humoring me here. So, um, a question of privilege. So just for all trustees' benefit, this is in the email that was sent to all trustees from our parliamentarian. Is a request or motion re, um, related to the rights and privileges of the board or its members? Using question of privilege as a claim that the matter is urgent enough to interrupt the current item and may be considered immediately. As per bylaw 10.10, the chair determines whether the matter is urgent enough to interrupt business. Example, a member is A is speaking, member B, chair, a question of privilege. At this point, both members A and B stop speaking. Chair, the member will state the question of privilege. Member B, there is a lot of noise coming from someone else's microphone and I cannot hear the meeting speak, member speaking. Chair, would everyone except member A please mute their microphones? Thank you, member A, please continue. That is a point of privilege. So I hope that helps. Another point of privilege would be if we were all in person, Madam Chair, it is too cold in this building. I can't, um, I can't function properly. Could somebody please look at, um, decreasing the air conditioning? Those are points of privilege or questions of privilege. Does that help, trustee DeRosa?
Madam Chair, I think I have a valid point of privilege if you allow me to make it.
What is your point of privilege, trustee DeRosa?
My point of privilege is that unless members around this table, regardless of who it is, are allowed to finish and complete their thoughts, I can't do my job.
So the, if you're referencing my conversation with trustee and Tomasi.
I didn't reference that.
Well, well, that's when you raised your point of privilege, trustee.
I understand. It's just another one of those occasions, Madam Chair.
Okay.
But it happens very frequently. So I've made it, I've made it. Thank you very much. I'd like to move on to my question.
Go ahead, trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, uh, Mark, thank you very much. And, uh, my point here is that, um, what I'd like to have some insight on is that information security is certainly, from a perspective of outside intruders, is a very, very important thing. And to have the tools to be, to be able, uh, to trustee Murphy's, uh, point, to have the tools in place to be able to, to effect proper, uh, information security is important. But there's also another aspect to information security, and that's information security from inside. And employees, uh, and members of the board, employee members of the board, depending on their level of authority, uh, I would imagine, like in order, other organization, they have different levels of, um, how should I say, uh, authority over the, the, the degree of, uh, uh, information that they have access to. Have we given that any consideration? Or is there any, anything in place that I'm not aware, uh, currently? Or maybe anything in place that is part of this review? Thank you, Mark.
Y- yes, uh, thank you, trustee DeRosa. Uh, the, um, the question that you're, you're, um, asking about access, yes, the answer is yes. Uh, the, uh, in fact, it's, it's laid out in the procedure that's, that accompanies this policy. Uh, when we speak about, uh, need-to-know principle and, uh, uh, access privileges. So, uh, that's the point is that to, to, um, I address those requirements that, uh, security requirements that have not been addressed. And I, and I'd like to also add operationally from, from, uh, two, two simulated phishing tests that we, uh, that, uh, myself along with IT executed, uh, this past fall. Uh, the, um, the, the numbers, uh, we started out with, uh, after sending out, uh, 5,000 emails, uh, close to 1,300 employees clicked on links that could have been, could have been malicious, but in this case they were tests. We followed up with another test in, uh, in December and that number went up, it didn't go down. So part of the, 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 the through the why part, the so what, as to why we're doing this, is to, is to really raise the, um, awareness, uh, not only, uh, well, when you said internally, you, you, you got me thinking about insider-type activities that could lead to an incident. So, uh, that's part of that, that's part of this policy. And specifically, it's addressed in the procedure.
May I have my follow-up, Madam Chair?
Yes, you may, trustee DeRosa.
So my reference to, to internal, uh, authority limits, for lack of a better word, uh, speaks to specifically, um, and, and I don't take this the wrong way, but there are certain employees who have access or who should have access to certain information and other, not other information. Do we have those limits in place now? Uh, or is it our plan to put those in place?
Thank you, trustee DeRosa. The, the, so this is, uh, you know, it's, it's not a simple, simple answer because, uh, processes change. Employees, one, one week might not need access, but then they take on a new role, uh, new activity, then they need access. It's, it's really difficult to, uh, it's, it's so, I want to go back to what I said earlier, reasonable steps. So our requirement under, under the Education Act, uh, under, uh, MFIPA, under PHIPA, uh, under, uh, the, the other pieces of legislation that speak to, uh, security. The requirements are to take reasonable steps. We are taking reasonable steps. Uh, we have in place, uh, access control reviews that we do conduct. Uh, I can't speak to what takes place in IT, that, that, that's, that's Bill's area. But that, that is, that, that's what we are addressing. That's, that's an example of what, uh, uh, this, this policy and accompanying procedure is supposed to address.
Thank you, Mark. Um, moving on to trustee.
I do have a clarification point, Madam Chair.
What is your clarifying question?
So, um, Mark, uh, I'm going to give you a practical example. Maybe I'm not explaining myself. Or maybe I am, but for instance, uh, HR data is very sensitive data.
Yes.
Not every employee has access to HR data, well, be it salaries, be it resumes, be it reviews, whatever, whatever it might be. HR, HR information is very, very sensitive and very highly, and needs to be highly secured.
Yes.
Does this policy going, going to address or review whatever we have in place now?
Yes.
Thank you, Mark. Moving on, trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you, um, and through you, Madam Chair, to Mark. Happy New Year, Mark.
Happy New Year.
Um, first question, Mark, under, um, first of all, I want to say I totally understand the need for security and I really value your work and I really admire your, admire your passion for this because it is so needed. Um, under the term requirements in this new policy, it says, if you are an employee, third party or trustee, you must conduct your work only on authorized applications and systems. Now, keep in mind, use the word must only on unauthorized applications. Why did, just curious why you found the need to put trustees in there?
So.
Just honestly.
Yeah, no, great, great question. And, and, and I was warned that this question might come up, so, uh, I'm, I'm glad you asked it. Uh, you have an email account, uh, with hdsb.org. And because you have an email account, uh, you, it will have access to our systems. Now, you, you know, I use the word must because there's only one word that implies compliance. If you want compliance, it's must. So that, that's why I use it here. I, I'm trying to be, there's three, there's three core requirements that when you look at these requirements and then you look at the procedure, it will all, it all comes together. And that's, that's the point is to bring it all together and address and close those gaps that we, that we, we, uh, we've unintentionally possibly have missed over the years because it's, it's a complicated, evolving field. It changes. Uh, what I tell you now may change in six months or a year from now. That's just the way it works. And on a daily, day-to-day basis, I mean, Bill already talked about, uh, the, the filtering, um, rules that they have in place. And they're checking things on an hourly basis. So this is, you know, the, for, in my, in my professional opinion, what's really, really important now is to educate people on, on email, on how to distinguish between a good email and a bad email. And that's why training is mandatory. Unfortunately, we're only at 14% of staff that, that have taken this training, that's been, it's been out since September. And as I mentioned a moment ago, the number of people clicking on links is going up, not going down. So, uh, you know, IT can do wonderful things, but they can't protect, something will get through and it just takes one person. And in addition, it's really important that what they're learning here, what staff learn here, they can apply this in their personal lives. They can help their children. They can help their, 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 their grandparents, their parents. This is, this is not just, not about protecting the board, it's about protecting everybody in the community.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien.
I have a follow-up question, Madam Chair. Let's drag you to Bill Crips, please. A question to you, Bill. Hi, Bill. You're there somewhere, I know.
I'm here in cyberspace, yep.
Okay, that's what it's all about. Um, Bill, um, this question, I, I've always wondered this question ever since I was a trustee, actually, because, um, it's been kind of put to me a few times. And, and I feel now it's time to ask it. Can IT monitor everything we send out on emails if they wanted to?
With, uh, through you, Madam Chair, with your board-provided email? Is that what you're going through? Or is this through maybe your personal email access through a board's network? Uh, there's, there's a lot to that question. Apologize.
Say anything that would be authorized application. Mostly.
Okay, I'll, I'll answer the question this way and then a follow-up can be provided by yourself then. If you are utilizing a board, um, supported email system that we essentially manage through the IT Services Department, the answer is we do, uh, we do have tools in place to manage and monitor emails coming in and out of the system.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Chair?
Yep, trustee O'Brien?
I know you're on a line of questioning and I totally respect that. A very quick, quick comment.
No, you're, you're good, oh, no, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, trustee.
Because you wanted to get us to give feedback. I'm finding that concept a little counterintuitive only for this reason. We as trustees are a board that's currently been elected to monitor staff and, and the operation of the board. And it's almost like we're giving a policy to a group that we're supposed to monitor, that they can monitor us. It's a small thing, but it just feels a little counterintuitive at this point to me. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. And I, I think I understood what you said. Okay, trustee DeRosa. Do you have a question?
I certainly do, Madam Chair. So with regards to board business, with regards to the use of board emails, what access controls are in place, if any? Or do we intend to review them and put them in place? With respect to the monitoring of trustee emails? That's just an example. Or for that matter, information kept on trustee computers belonging to the board? That's, it's an unclear line to see where that line really resides. And I'm not insinuating anything. I'm just wondering what the internal access controls that do exist, whether they do exist or not? Because that would be normally, normally the responsibility of the review of external auditors when they conduct testing for the purpose of relying on being able to give their opinions. So I've assumed all along that they've covered that end of internal controls. But since we're having the discussion, I'm having the opportunity to ask a question, so. And I, I think that this policy somehow should give us the comfort that those controls are being put in place where they don't exist. If they don't exist. There was a question in there somewhere.
Thank you. Well, I, I, you know, Bill and I love talking about this stuff. I will let Bill talk a little bit more. I can see he's up on the screen here, so Bill, take it away.
Thanks, Mark, through you, Madam Chair. It's a difficult answer for this one trustee DeRosa, but I will try to word it as best I can towards, I'm gonna call it, the purposes of answering this towards a trustee. When it comes to how I'm gonna call it, the email system is really utilized when it comes towards a search of emails. Realistically, a request would have to come in. And usually, we would see requests come in from, I'm gonna call it supervisory staff, you know, which would not really be able to request, I'm gonna call it trustee emails. All requests would eventually have to come through more or less myself or one of our managers and network services before even, I'm gonna call it, the search begins. So when it comes to trustees, I am going to, you know, more or less say we, we do typically have, I'm gonna call them, internal requirements on how it would be handled towards staff. We don't necessarily have one as it relates to trustees because, to be honest, in my 25-plus years here, I don't recall ever having to do one towards trustees. What I would say is, if we did have to go down this process, we would have to sort of, I would say, defer a lot of this to, you know, our, I would say unfortunately to our director on guidance. And then from there, that's where a determination would need to be made on how we are to proceed. So I don't know if Pat feels comfortable jumping in onto this one. It's a very difficult question to answer.
No, I, I think I've got a good sense. So thank you very much.
Thank.
I will speed my, my place.
Trustee O'Brien, do you have a question? Do you have the floor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Unless, I don't want to take anybody's spot because I know some people have not spoken. Just curious to either Mark or Bill, are there security issues around social media that are addressed in this? I'm not really that savvy on social media, but is that a concern as well? Like Twitter, Facebook? And if so, if there are issues, are they addressed in this policy? Thank you.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. So any social media account that you are using, that's public information. I mean, don't use it. If you don't, if you're, you know, if it's a problem, if you're worried about it, don't use it. I can't, we can't control Twitter, we can't control Facebook. That's, that's just the way it is. Now, those emails will come through our system because there's alert notifications that come through. And you'll see, you know, whoever's been posting Twitter feeds, they come through our system. That's, that's, that's just how it works. But those emails are already public. So we can't, we, we, we can't control that, to answer your question.
So just for clarity, are there any security issues with those emails coming in from those social media sources?
Oh, I think I understand. So, so, so it's an interesting question because the, the, if, if somebody is, is posing as Facebook or is impersonating Twitter and it's coming, and it looks like Twitter, but it's not, that's a problem. We try to catch that through our simulated phishing campaigns. That's why we ran those tests, that's why we have the training. So that's a problem, that's why we have the training. So, but if it's coming from legitimate Facebook or legitimate Twitter, that's, you know, we have to, they are who they are. They are multi-billion dollar companies that invest a lot in security and, and information management. So if it's coming through their Twitter feeds, it's public information. If it's something that we need to spot and, this is where, when you look at an email, you have to hover your mouse over the link to say, oh, okay, that, that doesn't look right. Or I'm not expecting this from this person. Or I'm not, this is what, so that's, I think maybe that's what you're leaning toward?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, you answered my question.
Okay. Trustees, it looks like there's no further questions. So, Mark, I thank you very much and Bill. And we'll wait to, to see this come back to the table as an action item. So we are moving on to item 8.1. So trustees, we have information items. We have 8.1, 8.2, 8.3 and 8.4. Those are all associated policies or procedures. Okay, trustee O'Brien, you have a question?
Thank you, madam. I'm not, I'm looking at my agenda. The one on social media, is that a procedure?
It is a procedure, it's administrative procedure, yes.
Thank you, I do have one question regarding that, if that's okay to ask.
Okay, so what is your question?
And I believe Ms. Wynden's name is attached to this, if I'm not wrong. I'm not sure, I, I, I just kind of pulled this off. But my question is directed to her. If Ms. Wynden is on the line. And it is, it says, thank you, madam Chair, through you to Ms. Wynden. It says, under media application, social media applications, this procedure applies to all staff and trustees who are interacting with students, parents, guardians, staff, trustees and members of the broader community on social media channels and online platforms. Ms. Wynden, I don't know if you could, you could find that section, it's under media, social media application.
I see it, trustee, yeah, I see it, trustee O'Brien.
So my question is to Ms. Wynden, um, this procedure applies, it says applies to all staff and trustees. Right? Does it also apply to students, parents and guardians as well?
This particular procedure does not. This applies to, and I'll tell you why, because it applies to social media accounts that are reflecting, representing our board. So trustees, when they are on social media through their, and not their personal accounts so much as their board, when they identify as an HCDSB trustee and staff, when they're using either a school account, a classroom account, a department account, they are in, in effect representing our board. And so that's, that's what this procedure applies to.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that being said, moving on to item 8.5 is trustees, this is our upcoming agenda items for our February 8th board policy meeting. So if everybody has a look there. And then we'll move on now to item 8.1, no, item 9 miscellaneous information, there is none. Item 10 correspondence, there is a correspondence there, it was included, it was updated in the package. Item 11, in camera, there's no need to return in camera. Item number 12, motion to excuse absent committee members. There is no motion to excuse, there's no absent committee member, sorry. And then we are going to, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Moved, O'Brien?
Moved by trustee O'Brien, thank you, seconded by?
All seconded, O'Hearn, Chernotta.
Thank you, seconded by trustee O'Hearn, Chernotta. Anybody opposed? Okay. So the meeting is adjourned and we will have trustee Agnew lead us in our closing prayer.
Thank you very much and for you, Madam Chair. If you can join me in the son of our faith, in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Gracious Father, thank you for making this day successful. As we depart, Lord, we ask you to be with us. May your angels go before us and clear the way so that we can reach home safely. Thank you for the lives that you have prepared beforehand for us to touch with your word. Lord, thank you for the laughter and the wonderful time that we share with our family and friends. And may all glory and honor come back to you in everything that we do. It is in Jesus's name we believe and pray. Amen. Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you, trustee Agnew, and thank you, everyone, have a great evening.